One thing to consider, I think, is the is the there's a level of credibility that comes with a doctorate degree, both in the degree but also with with faculty. We just received approval from the state board yesterday to move forward with our Bachelor of Applied Science degree and so is a bachelor award at a granting institution. Certainly, there's their that has implications for the credentials, the faculty that were teaching classes, but also I think that can extend to the people who are supervising those faculty. So I think that's something to consider. Out in the community, is that how important it is? Is it that the president of the college is seen as Dr. So-and-so? I mean, you all have a much better feel for that than I do. And and then another question is, you know, when it comes down to the practical day-to-day ability to lead the organization, how important is that? And I think it has a and I think I could argue both sides of that because on the one hand, you've got there we are in education, institution of higher education, and we put a credence into academic credentials. We're in the business of providing academic credentials. And and depending on what the degree is, there's a lot of value and knowledge that comes with that. I have seen in my interaction with with different administrators. In some cases, it makes a big difference if someone's gone to a doctor and the knowledge that they gain, the the perspective that they develop as they go through that process. On the other hand, could could I say that if you didn't have the doctorate, there's no way you could you could do the job? I'd have a hard time going that far. I'd just say you there's no way that you could do the job if you didn't have the doctorate. Have very skilled and strong leaders that don't have that credential. So so it's probably a wishy-washy answer. Obviously, I mean, you it's up to you to make that decision, I think. But those are some things that ain't gotta be taken into consideration. I guess if I if I was if it was my decision to make, I would probably err on the side of requiring a doctorate, but but
So, what about you?
I don't know. It's that's a hard that's a difficult one to answer, too, because I think people perceive that the president should have a doctorate degree, but I'm I'm not certain, but that's always necessary. Maybe I get somebody from a professional technical background who doesn't necessarily have a doctorate who could be excellent, isn't it? So I'm not sure.
What other question? Just a statement that I'm beginning to be involved at state level. Two of probably the best presidents, Bob Knight and Ed Brewster from Grace Harvard, came from outside with that. Ed Brewster, I think eventually got his doctorate, but they were outstanding presidents, President of the State Presidents Association and very well respected, but I think it is a consideration. And you know what I answered? I think it probably should be.
Right. So we will get to work. Craft the draft that we get to you prior either at the same time as we send you the results of the survey or fairly close, so that you can look those over. I do encourage you. How many feedback did you get, materials? And have specific thoughts that you want to consider if you direct those things to Melinda so that we can keep a track of record of that? And be able to make sure we touch on those things when it comes time to truly get down to a final draft of that job description as well as an the review of the campus community survey questions. I do know that we had Melinda received some feedback from Thomas that he supported the questions as they appear here, and those are the survey questions from 2012. Ken and I had a conversation this week that I'd like Kurt to talk to about perhaps using the same exact questions for the campus community and the external community so that we have better alignment of response.
So I, you know, I was not employed by the college at the time that this happened, and when I looked through the file, it appeared that that the questions one through four may have been more outward-facing, and then the input from the campus on qualities is kind of where faculty and staff had a chance to chime in. And so I, in an email to Stephen, you know, I think the first four questions, I don't know that I would have anything. I couldn't find anything additional that should be that should be asked. I I would encourage the trustees to consider getting input on those four questions, not only from the external stakeholder groups, but the campus community, because I do think that our faculty and staff are very aware of issues going on in the state and at the institution, and that they have a good feel for what those critical issues are going to be, as well as kind of long-range things that the president needs to be aware of, and it really allows for an apples-to-apples kind of comparison between the external view and the internal view. If you so I would encourage you to to provide that opportunity, and that's pretty easy to do through Survey Monkey. If you are looking for input on the desired qualities of the new president, you might wait and you might share the draft job description with the campus to say, okay, what did we forget? That would be an opportunity to get at that. If that if you are interested in that.
It also seems like the questions from the campus kind of all are just subcategories, question three. So I think maybe, you know, to direct the responses to the third question, you know, we include those six items as examples, so that we're getting more responses specifically to those characteristics.
Yeah, I we could. Again, I just want to make sure. I think that there is a lot of interest and engagement around this process. And that if you if we provide people with an opportunity to share their opinions or their feedback, they will do that. I think as long as the trustees make it clear that you're going to do something with it. So that that really is the key. The campus community will have a lot, I think, to say about this, because there is some buzz already in different committees and things like that. But they want to know that if they're going to take the time to share information with you, that you're actually going to use that information.
Well, that's it's almost like I don't want to let you even start to create that job description until we get this information, because I think this information should inform the creation of that job description. So maybe in the description of the survey, you know, not only are we going through this recruitment process, but as part of that process, we're drafting that that job description, and that's why we want this engagement, because that will be informing what we ultimately put in that job description. Then in turn, would we ask the therapy and once we've drafted it up as well, to get their input to see if they had missed anything, any additional, so take it to the other side as well?
I don't know that we'd go to the level of of survey, you know, secondary survey. I guess that, like, how much work is that? Um, I, well, it's not a lot of work to to produce a survey in Survey Monkey. I would say I so what if what staff and faculty say continually is actions speak louder than words. And so if we are interested in transparent communication and getting feedback and having the campus engaged in the process, then I would encourage you to do the follow-up step to get that feedback.
I think it's gonna be a task for the to input build it, but then again, in turn, for the transparency for, hey, we're using your input to Yeah, it's just timing and making sure that staff has enough time to
How long will the first round survey be out for?
It depends on how long you want it to be out for. You know, it can be open for a week, for two weeks. What you usually see with surveys is there's a group of people who fill it out the first day, it lands in the inbox, and there's a group of people who wait until the night that it's due. So I would say I wouldn't I wouldn't leave it open for more than two weeks. Maybe 10 days.
So would we build it that the survey hits, the committee then drafts a job description, considering those responses, and then that goes back out for review and comment? And then I guess would the review and comment be everyone or just the campus?
So a question for you. So I heard the survey goes out. Then so the committee, which would be Stephen and John and myself, would base the job description on that, which means that the remaining trustees would not see the description or the survey results.
I think it would have to go to the trustees through Melinda for them to communicate. They shouldn't stop me if I get off the rails, but for them to communicate, Melinda, any comments or questions or suggestions in that draft. But but we would be in a scenario where we have a draft based on the survey and would need to get it back out to the campus and then back in hand, and any modifications in another round made in order to get to you officially for the 14th of November. So I would be a fan of 10 days. A little bit more than a week. I'm interested to know how we're delivering this to the external community. Matt maybe has some thoughts on that, but distributing it inside the campus community is pretty clear. But how are we going to achieve this? Are we going to look to our advisory committee members? Are we going to send it out just as a general survey that's available on the website to any and all?
Yeah, I think definitely open it to everyone. I would also just maybe contact the chamber if we last year, try and send it out to everybody that would be able to avoid. There's been a reach for it.
Yeah, so basically, like, if we have contact information with the working vice presidents, they should be specifically sent to that, but then also have that open opportunity.
So I would I would say the chamber as well as the EDC to ask them to send it to their investor groups and the board members to make sure that it's high on their radar. Right?
We have a foundation board and the head office as well. And then Terry's involved with the Vol- with Moses Lake Rotary, but the Rotary Board is just a service company.
We don't want to put an alimony or a comedian where he goes far as, you know, making a small, you know, digital ad on Harold's website or something like that within stores.
Directly.
I don't know how many people is that kind of skewed? People just do it and go in creating crazy things just to
Some, yeah.
Anytime you do, y'all come. Somebody surprising will show up. But the other, from my perspective, speaking about the entire service district, is we have a very large geographic boundary in in making sure that those communities outside of Moses Lake and Quincy and Odello are aware that this is going on. So we would, I think your social media presence would have to be utilized frequently during that survey period, just to keep it top of mind. I've been involved for the last three months in a community-based development, we asked for conducting a survey, and the firm that they hired to do that had an initial email list of 2,000 people. And I think our response, our total response out of that 2,000 was less than 300. They wrote, they sent press notifications to all local print media, they used the leaked social media. And like you said, the the single largest response volume occurred within the first 24 or 30 hours. And then their their last phase was targeted phone calls, but I don't think that we have time in our schedule to nor need to pick that on. So but I do think we need a pretty solid attack plan for pushing it out and doing as many reminders as possible.
We could do that, and I could probably talk to most of the media outlets after we do some kind of social media advertising targets for our service district specifically. We could get those groups, I'm sure I have another Harold, we'd all share that pad and share that on social media, which are, you know, our $7,000 followers, and we go to a hybrid as each, there's 20,000 plus more, another 10 to 12 from Harold. It's a pretty problem.
I think that's that's a great additional point. So did we decide then that we would put the desired qualities bullets underneath question three?
I don't. What I heard was maybe in parentheses. Do you want to do? Is that what you meant, Dana?
Yeah, I think just kind of doing the, like, here's some suggested topics that you can comment on, but it's really just, yeah.
So I do have two more questions with regard to the survey. So we've got the external community, the internal community, which is faculty and staff. Do you want to provide an opportunity for students to weigh in? Because if they're all, if we're asking all the same questions, it's just as easy to do as, you know, send a link to those students. If you feel like that's something you want to give them the opportunity to to weigh in on that. And do you have a date when you want this to launch, like tomorrow or Monday, or what are you thinking?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible. Okay.
Though I do think that that's paramount in order for us to stay on track. I would would like to see that go out as soon as physically possible to get that collection going. I did want to ask on again from a faculty perspective, have you looked these over? Do you feel like this would be a good approach for garnering feedback from the faculty?
I do. Well, just have to ensure that all the faculty are aware that it's there so they don't just see any now.
Well, certainly, if you if you inside of your stakeholder group can poke and prod a little bit, we would appreciate it. It's really critical that that campus community has a clear opportunity to provide us some feedback, because it really does shape a very serious decision going forward. Ken, did you have other questions?
No, I was just gonna count. So the seven. So if we open it up on the 14th, which is Monday, and and then I think 10 days is maybe the 23rd. And then that should have enough time to look at the information and start kind of crafting, but we can go, you know, later on in the week, but sometime next week to get that.
Will the responses identify whether it's faculty, staff, community, students?
What I probably will do is do three separate surveys, so there will be a unique link for the external community, one for internal and one for the students, and then see if the folks in institutional research, if I send the data to them, they can compare it. But based on the way these are, it's all going to be free-form comments anyway. So but we could see if we can do kind of a side-by-side.
Closing on the 23rd, I'll soon from there, then, would the data be assembled?
So because it's all free-form comments, it's really just doing an export, a PDF export and emailing emailing it to the trustees.
And then the three of us meet as soon as the 25th?
I'm not available. Well, I will be in Odessa. You could visit me there.
I'm gonna be gone the full next week to attend the wedding on a stage. So what about the 24th? Is that too soon or?
The 24th, I'm gonna be up in Spokane in half.
This morning, we're surveying, so it's not really gonna have a lot of people. We should tell them.
No, no, we haven't done that yet.
For the morning of the 24th of the week?
Yeah, I can do I can do anything on the 24th, and if that's not an option, I'm happy to do something on that.
Okay, we'll aim for that. We'll follow up. Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments direct to the survey? Thank you for that. We wanted to discuss the proposed timeline, which is included in your packet. And there's there's one desire that we have is to actually act on this timeline at the regular board meetings. But additionally, trustees Redwick had raised a suggestion that the presidential search timeline should also be including development of a process for the onboarding and orientation of a new president. We've been doing a tremendous amount of work around that type of activity for future members of the board of trustees. And so on the second page of the draft timeline, which you've seen before, there are four months worth of green additions, which are addressing establishing a process to determine what onboarding and orientation would look like. In having a conversation with Dr. Leeds about this, he encouraged us to make this an intentional part of our plan in that when he arrived as president, we could have done better in getting him connected to community leaders and organizations and entities throughout the service district. There were some, some trustee time was spent introducing him to some group, but it wasn't nearly comprehensive. Thomas and I had a conversation about the notion of those trustee-driven introductions brought service area outreach and perhaps a specific community welcoming reception where the trustees are present to introduce folks to the new president in a celebratory setting at the front end of their arrival. So what you have is beginning in January would be working to look for samples of onboarding and orientation. We've talked a little bit already about how to secure that information and then begin to draft a timeline or a dashboard mechanism similar to the fourth new board of trustees one that you'll be asked to consider this afternoon. Do you have any comments or questions or suggestions specific to those?
I have talked to some of the trustees at CUC, and they have a very well-designed onboarding of the president, so I will get that information material. And then hopefully that's something that's
And can remember, I can't remember. I know one of you said you were going to start some outreach.
I I said I would.
So we will gather that to compare, so look at it. I I put that over into January rather than starting it sooner simply for the the time friends trying to get the Presidential Search Advisory Committee formed and brought on board and having their first round of work in November and December. It felt like we should start in January working on that actual onboarding. Does anyone have any questions or additions to that actual proposed calendar and schedule for this earth?
No, I think it's good that at where you put the onboarding, because at that point, you'll know kind of what a candidate pool is to.
And everything here is a bit fluid. I think this is a living document as we go forward over the next several months. Been striving to make sure that we were at that March 31st, hopefully have a secure president. Don and I talked about it last week a little more about the idea that if at that stage where we have our finalists, the trustees have conducted the interviews and the site visits, and we're still wanting more information, this timeline gives us the full month of April, and even if necessary, the full month of May to perhaps do an additional round of interview conversation and follow-ups with our top candidates of choice and give this wiggle room. But it would certainly be beneficial to us and to the new president for that decision to be made and secured by the end of March, giving them time to notify current employer as well as us commencing contractual negotiations. The other item that I have is the consideration of the Presidential Search Advisory Committee. And if you recall, a lot of those positions are determined internally here on campus. But the trustees were asked for some recommendations for specific positions, which are the positions that we get to select. So specifically, two members of the board have already been selected, myself and Don, to represent the board on the advisory committee. We have the option to select a community representative, a local industry representative, and a K-12 educator representative. These names that you see over under potential members, and looking here. Isn't there also a foundation member?
Yes, a foundation member.
Oh, there is a, okay. So that's determined internally? I think we had some recommendations from
She did. So we have we have recommendations for a number of the internal positions.
Oh, I took off the foundation board recommendations. I should have. Do you want me?
Could you just share who those are?
Jacob Bar and Angie Clark.
So is selecting a foundation board member up for us to do, or is that done internally?
So that's a good question. I don't know how it was handled previously. And if you wish
I had it on my list, and it was one that fell to our feet.
Don't remember. But I think you can
So specifically, we wanted to weigh in on the foundation piece if we're selecting. I feel like Jacob Bar gives us a lot of representation for a lot of different ways. A recent graduate of Big Ben, incredibly active in the support of Celebration, both as an auctioneer but as a champion for Big Ben, say, to be really strong in it. And I just wanted to get that out there. That's why I was looking through And I just wanted to get that out there as well as looking through. Under the K-12 educator representative, there's only one name that was suggested and that was from me. It's the only not Grant family representative, as far as I know, on this list except for up in community representative is Mike Schessler. She is the director of school and career and technical education. The fellow school district. Directly involved with the Career Connected Learning Project, which is a dual county project. She's been working with directors of CTE here around a few counties. So certainly a strong representative on the workforce side, I think K-12 level. Under community representative, I don't know how you feel about legislators on the committee. We did internally have a discussion early on that that's not normally somewhere in a direction that we go. One, they have incredibly hectic schedules and the number of meetings that are involved in this process, but also making an attempt to be cautious about politicizing the search process for a president. They will do a great job, Senator Schessler would, as would Representative Alex Bar, Quincy who is also Quincy's full history board member.
She's the CEO.
Oh, he's a little heavily weighted with what's and Senator, I think one would probably be sufficient, but.
Greg Fletcher is that? I think the challenge you have for Brad, who's already having a CTE project.
I'd like to suggest on local industry, Lisa Carstetter, who's available.
Ryan Miners is with.
Uh, basic American food?
Yes.
Yes, so food processing.
Lisa would do a great job. I know it's a basis for schedule.
Let's get a little more diversity on this list.
That's someone that you can look for.
Vegan, vegan. Two hospitals, student care hospitals in the area and three reps.
I like the idea of Teresa Solomon. As a community representative. Lisa Carstetter would be strong on behalf of Microsoft if she's available. And time commitment is going to be one of those things that we won't know until we reach out. And I can't do the outreach until.
What is, what is Mike Wren's role?
The last time we did this search in 2012, we brought a former trustee back as the rep. And so Felix was the person who filled that community representative seat. And obviously Mike was the chair of the board and chair of the Presidential Search Advisory Committee in 2012.
City of Freda. Representative from there possibly. City administrator. Hispanic representation possibly. Anybody from your area?
It'd have to be with Microsoft. I was aware of most of the names that were on the community representative list. They can come up with someone I thought I could counter with there.
But Alex would, Alex would be great for being new, Hispanic, Quincy, school district, covers a lot of diversity there.
The challenge we have will be any work that has to be done by the Presidential Search Committee after January 1 because of their legislative session. So my fear is that they start their work in Olympia, their committee work in Olympia in November. They weren't active up until about the holiday. Part of Thanksgiving. I'm happy to ask if he's willing to do it.
He's not grateful for it.
But I agree that it would be great for them to have a community representative. And broader geography and removing ticks into here. So I'm almost inclined to say if we selected Amy Paris for the K-12 position from the Alamo School District, that we need to look elsewhere in a different community.
Maybe the capacity for Brent would be to ask him for recommendations from his board because he does have an individual, I think it's remember his name, it's from Mottawall.
The board. Lars Leland?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Like, so if we don't have Brent, then maybe he has some suggestions.
Who's the executive director of the board in Mottawall, which puts two more, two academics on the selection.
Which is. Outlying area.
Yeah, not in the Hispanic network.
No. But maybe Lars has somebody he could recommend.
Yeah.
Maybe Lars has someone he could recommend from his area.
Okay. Any of these that we can essentially confirm that anything? And we need to get busy setting the meeting dates for the committee and actually confirming their willingness to participate. And then my drop date to come back to you is the November 14th meeting, so.
So what about HR representative?
That, well.
Outlying area, like somebody outside of the college as well, a little people, right?
That's our HR representative.
Is it? Okay, thank you. I want to be sure. Yeah, because basically the one that we don't have potential members, that's because they're being decided by it. Okay, got it.
And each of the individuals that goes on this group is required to sign a confidentiality agreement. And we did not in 2012 publish the list of names on this committee in advance. Do you support the idea of Jacob Bar for the foundation board representative?
Either one, yeah.
And Angie would be for industry also.
Yeah, I, I think Jacob just has that unique perspective of being a recent graduate.
College of Superior. Lisa Carstetter first choice for local industry representative?
Quincy.
Yeah, I think that helps spread the geographic. I think for the community representative, it would be good to have somebody from like Mottawall Royal's area. So contacting Lars would be a good.
I think we should take all the representatives and send them to us.
We appreciate their work.
Absolutely.
It's just, it's really, but, but maybe then again, Alex has somebody from his area or somewhere in his network. Maybe they're, they're resource for asking.
So if we get Lisa, she's from Quincy. So we can lean over to Mottawall Royal and ask community leaders there for a suggested name. About the large and um, well, travels with us for refund.
I think it's good to contact Alex and ask for a recommendation too. You seem like a little people that.
So we're good with Jacob Bar as a foundation and Lisa Carstetter as top choice for local industry rep. Very comfortable with Amy Paris. And we'll do some more work on the community representative position.
And I was prepared.
Melinda, do you know if all of the other positions have now been filled?
They've been suggested. So, um, we're still waiting for the faculty selections to occur. We have a number of folks who've indicated interest from the exam staff, but no decision has been made in that particular arena yet. And then we do have two classified staff that have agreed to.
Do they have a deadline?
For which? For the faculty?
For any of the internal.
Um, so Slan and I had a conversation earlier this, well, we had a conversation by email earlier this week. And I think he, they have selected the academic transfer faculty member to serve. He is still speaking with the faculty on the workforce side and in the professional studies division to secure a representative there. So I think they should all be, it should all be sorted out or narrowed down by your next meeting.
So if you're in agreement, I'll do the outreach. And to the three that we're confirming on, but also these other folks to try to get really good solid recommendations. And we'll seal that decision at the November 14th. Kim, are the confidentiality agreements ready for board trustees, you know?
Um, so we, unless Jason recommends something different, we would use the same confidentiality agreement that we use for all of our other searches. And yes, I could print those out. There's a section to read and then a document to something. And so they reference, you know, confidentiality as well as public records and. So I can, Jason, if you want to see it, I can email it to you.
Great. And then that way we can get that ready and distributed as well prior to the November 14th meeting so you can have all of our signatures on November 14th. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to discuss around the topic of the Presidential Search? Matt, I'm putting you on the spot and didn't think about asking you this in advance. Can you talk a little bit about how you're going to approach the actual marketing of the recruitment thing? Do you have a plan? No, it's, it's enough. I know you're doing the pre-design work for the materials.
It just varies on what you're wanting to do as far as if you want to push intentionally or if you want to press releases out, how far you can send them. Just a lot of questions.
And then Kim, you also said there are some online databases that tools that you, that the posting goes through, is that correct?
Yes. So what Matt and I had spoken about before is his department would create the actual digital display ads, so to speak. And that we have a series of online places where we would post that through the Chronicle, Higher Ed Jobs dot com, the State Board. And we would use a mixture of the display ad, the digital display ad as well as just some text, depending on the website. And it would go out to a number of what we would call diversity websites. And we don't do print, print ads, but if you felt like that was important, then we could. But yeah, so he would be creating kind of the, the digital and then the human resources folks would communicate that out. And then anything initially that you would want through press releases or Facebook posts or things like that, we could do.
I think it would be interesting to see what other colleges have done recently.
You know, you get that for years. I have it in my case, you know, you need. We'll make some copies for you.
Yeah, I mean, I think just, you know, if you wanted to include that, like in a number incentive, just so for information.
And then we just discussed, you know, we printed a large quantity of the recruitment brochure in 2012.
Oh, we did. No, we won't do that.
We don't want to do that, but we did discuss having a handful of them for trustees to have in their possession.
Yes, and Matt is working on save the date card. And we could also do whatever digital display ad he comes up with. We could convert that to like a half sheet, more heavier stock that you all could hand out.
And then the save the date is our time sensitive piece because John travels 60. So.
Just any feedback that you provide on what was given to you.
Yeah, it was good.
What you want to include on the back and that can be done pretty quickly.
I think we're going to have some time between that now and the lunch. So if we could have that chat, that would be great. Please don't let people stick around for that.
And I need to just clear a little bit how I see it being a little tough if we get into a time crunch from getting feedback from the board of what they need outside of a setting like this. Is there a way around that or is everyone got to have come from everybody being here and everybody wanting? Is it so that's going to?
Anything recruitment material wise that, that you need us to get eyes on can certainly go to John and I as members of the search committee. But I'd ask you to run it through Melinda so there's an official tracking of those transactions. But there's also, you know, the possibility when we sit down with, with Tim, you know, have a conversation about the survey results and job description that if you have something, then to share with us, that can be done too.
Great. I'm just to have a fun list of dates that Charlotte is going to be discussing something or opportunities to have to get to us.
Yeah, I think we have that, the short timer's piece just on save the date. So that John has something to take with him physically. The HCT conference next week and then we won't leave anything else officially until we get to launch date. My guess, Kim, based on the things we're still going to have to do on the 14th of November, that the physical pushing the button probably won't be the very next day.
Um, it, so like, ready to accept applications? Oh, yeah, Kimmy.
Okay.
Because it's, I mean, it's our system. My office or I, we build the class specs, we, so if most of it, whatever the draft position is, we can use that and then go back into the system and tweak it. And yes, we can make it active or live on the 15th.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments?
When we ask everyone else, so Denise, do you have any other thoughts that we have? Melinda, any thoughts?
We could also have a brief discussion about how you want the webpage to look, what info that you like on it.
Okay.
I've got a very, very basic setup done already.
Is that, so is that a website inside of a website?
It's a webpage on our website, that's dedicated to the actual search. Put a timeline on it that could be limited, updated as certain benchmarks are met throughout the search. Something that faculty and staff could go and look at and get the latest updates on candidates.
Assuming that we approved the search timeline this afternoon, that can be there. The actual recruitment materials that I'm guessing will be there. And then any of the updates from us to the campus community will be included. Any news or press releases? or press releases.
Also, like, you know, the chamber, the school district links to those things that would be super candidates.
Yeah, I would say so. Anything around that, you know, relocation packet scenario, I'm thinking about this job and how fast can I find out things about great county and county.
I think in the, in 2012, when I looked back through Holly's files, there were some specific things that they wanted to make sure candidates had access to internally. So that would be like monitoring reports and demographic information about student population, so ways to link that, make sure that those links are on that page to other pages so that.
Candidate resources.
Yes, so that people don't have to go combing through. And so that is, we have that from 2012.
And in that group of candidate resources, we would do the monitoring reports, the
Whatever you would like to do, yes.
I'm thinking, I'm just ball parking here, the strategic plan materials and sort of directional documents that were created in the last year for campus going forward.
So I do have a question for you with regard to the Employee Focus Report. So right now that resides on the portal, so that's an internal location. And so, so my question would be, are you, would, so would it be better to post the actual campus climate action plan on the forward-facing website that addresses the items in the report or do you want that report? And you don't have to answer it now. I think that's, I know that you said you want it to be very transparent, which, which I think is good. I also think that being mindful that the report contains good information that we want to address, some of that information about individuals is presented in not a helpful way. And, and so how we might want to make sure that candidates know that this is something that we need to address without having, requiring people to live through processes.
I'm reading through the lines. Last chance to.
To talk.
But is it still on the document?
It is, yes. And I'm not saying you shouldn't, I'm just saying that there's a lot of things to think about.
Yeah. Anything else, anyone? Okay, there are none.